Get the language. I've talked to Holly at RPC. And I think we're going to figure out a better path forward. So I just wanted to kind of update the commissioners on that so to have a little measure of comfort. But I know it kind of came in not needing warning, and I just wanted to kind of address that during.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm aware of the letter. And as you know, I struggle not to practice law anymore since I don't have a license. But it appeared to me to be of no legal consequence.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I advised them. But I think it's just more figuring out a good procedure point with RPC. So that's really what. So we'll work with them moving forward.
I'm sorry? Yeah, my intention is to ignore the letter. But perhaps you have some different opinion for me.
Working with Amy makes sense. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was clear that the issue that arose earlier this year prior to changes being made within the RPC. So we are working on addressing a path forward to make sure that all townships are heard and participate.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I know that your role as of late has become much more entertaining. You might choose a different word.
Thank God for Holly. So yeah, we'll get that figured out.
Appreciate the work you're doing and look forward to continuing with that.
Want to stay on Holly because I think she has a new staff person to maybe introduce?
Well, I was gonna ask. Who we got here?
Sapa, the resident. And she came to us. Her birthday was yesterday. She is a planner and she has her master's in city and regional planning. And we're so excited to have her onboard. And she's part of helping us move in the right direction for regional planning. So welcome, Sapa.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Thank you.
And thanks to Jennifer Morgan, who's the regional planning president. So thanks for joining us as well, Jennifer. And Holly, I think you have one more person that'll be starting. Is it next week?
Yes, we have Joshua Hillberry, who is starting on Monday of next week. So I will be bringing him by hopefully next week. If not next week, we will.
Thank you.
Well, let's just stay with Holly.
For 100.
Couldn't help but notice you issued a press release today, which I appreciate. I don't, I don't know. What's that?
You did.
Oh, I issued it.
I just forwarded your press release.
Well, I issued a press release. You know, I knew it was going out. I know it was signed on Tuesday. But we're, I don't know if pause is the right word. But on the land use plan, we're going to take some more time with that. And so a couple of things that are going on there is our vendor that's been working with us in helping get through this process is going to go back again to the townships and reconnect with them. You know, I don't want to say for any individual township of what they were thinking or not thinking when they were initially contacted about these ideas. Just to go back a little bit. This idea of kind of redoing the plan, updating it, emanated from initially discussions with the townships who wanted our help. And there were some initial meetings. I don't know. It seems as if maybe some of the townships kind of got a little separated from the process and then came back to it a little later with concerns. And so, but regardless of whatever the history there is, the process will involve circling back to those townships, getting a lot of feedback on the plan. Some of the feedback is based on accurate information. Some of the feedback is not, which is fine. We're all been doing this a while. We understand how these things go. But the process will be extended by several months while we reconnoiter with the townships and some citizens that have expressed legitimate concerns and see if we can come to a plan that people will be more accepting of. But I think more accepting is the best we could hope for. Wild applause by all concerned is not where we're going to wind up here. The example I use sometimes is, you know, on a real simple thing. Like if my toothbrush is moved, I don't like that. That's changed. It's not where it was yesterday. And I suspect at the end of this process, a toothbrush will be moved. And that will be disappointing to some people. So I'm not aiming up there. But I do think we can accept that, you know, perhaps not everybody has been as engaged as maybe they wish they had been throughout the process. And so we're going to try to do that. I think the idea would be for this not to come before the commissioners for any action prior to December 19. There were some suggestions from some citizens that several months would be helpful to them. I think December was even mentioned and we've accepted that suggestion. And are just kind of moving the timeline and hitting the pause button a little bit or reset button, whatever button you want to call it. I heard that some lawyer or something at the recent public meeting announced to everybody that this was a done deal and that there was no point in discussing it anymore. A quintessential example of misinformation and our announcement today kind of proves that.
May I add to that, Commissioner?
Please.
I believe, Holly, it's anticipated at the December 12 meeting, regional planning would be formally taking action to vote to recommend it to the Board of Commissioners at that point of time.
Or not.
Or not. And then with December 19 being the public meeting option for the commissioners, where we have secured the workforce center to be able to accommodate any type of crowd.
And our meeting is on December 5th, yes.
Oh, the 5th, not the 12th. I apologize.
Yes, that is correct.
All right. Thank you for that legal update.
Thank you.
I looked down at Jenna, thought, crap, we're still on legal update. All right, administration update.
Yes, we can review American Rescue Plan update from the 30.6 received. 28.6 has been appropriated, 15.3 expended, and 4.4 encumbered or obligated. I think I did mention previously that we've got word for some of our currently approved projects that they are exceeding their estimates. And so we are getting back with them to be able to make sure that they can get that project over the finish line and completion. So you will see those amounts change, especially the encumbered amounts here in the very near future. Bart, Jeff, would you add anything to that?
Not at this time.
Okay, all right. So we got great news from Chancellor Gardner of the Ohio Department of Higher Education. Had an opportunity to speak with him yesterday. He shared a letter that he had signed and finalized. So we have a fully executed agreement with the state for the 4.5 million at the workforce center. And should expect the distribution of those funds within the next five to seven days. But he was very thankful and appreciative for the commissioners and OU and Hocking College working on this and the continued success of the workforce center. Anything to add on that?
Mr. Levy?
I just wish Rick was here today because he didn't think this day had ever come.
Yeah, he's running a tiny bit late.
Well, that's okay. The letter from the chancellor was appreciated and impressive in its own right. But the communication there is strong. And feeling a little bit like we have a new friend in state government that can be helpful to us at times and appears to want to do that. So that is encouraging. And another in what has become now an incredibly long line of indications that getting noticed for some of the things that we're doing. So we take some small measure of pride in that.
And he conveyed his appreciation for his interactions with the county and leadership and was very appreciative of that. Transit governance change from LFPT to the county. And we have folks here from the city this morning. But county administration and human resources has been working with those fine folks from the city in the back. We have current service safety director. And Carrie, what title are you serving under now?
Falls free to chat.
Is that on business cards?
I'm asked to order them.
Could I trouble you folks to come down with us a little bit?
Sure.
Hey, Josh, could you slide over one and let them have a little seat there together?
You've always wanted to be John Coaches. We're John Coaches instead of Falls Free to Chat today.
So we're ready to have our deputy. I see a vision play.
Okay. Yep, yep, that's what we did as well. So we have a resolution on today, which is kind of the yang of the yang in terms of the city's resolution regarding the intent to transfer governance. In a couple of different settings, I've mentioned an anticipation that this process will be very difficult, complex. And that, you know, every once in a while, we probably just need to lift our chin up and take a look at the horizon because that's kind of where we're headed, even though we're going to go through some challenges to get there. Chaslin knows that we've scheduled a meeting for September 30. If that's a Saturday, I think, for an all staff. That was an idea that we came up with to just get in front of folks that may be hearing this or thinking that and maybe worried, right? Has change is bad. So we want to be, you know, right there with them and work through a number of the challenges. Some I had thought of, others other people had thought of, but it's complex. You got a mid-year situation and people have benefits and vacation accruals, pay scales and health insurance. And there's lots of challenges to deal with those things. I think our intent is to make people whole, you know, to make sure that the transition doesn't create harm for the folks that we're going to need to work with as we move forward in the discussions about the potential for transfer. And I want to concentrate on that language for a minute. The discussions regarding the potential for transfer. I mean, I think at 30,000 feet, there's general acceptance among leadership of both entities that it's an appropriate path forward. But we all have to keep our mind open for potentially meaningful information that comes up that might alter the equation in some way that I don't currently anticipate. I don't see it. But I'm willing to see it, I guess, is what I'm saying. Is just, you know, if something is, something is wrong with what we're thinking about here, it becomes apparent and, you know, we need to deal with that and continue to think that through. But I feel good. I feel good about it. I wanted to give you folks an opportunity to comment on the resolution. I guess the process that we envision.
Commissioner, I actually, I feel like it's, there's not a hurdle that we cannot get over. I see a partnership here that's been really amazing. Beautiful County deserves even more transit than what we provide. I think I'm very proud of where we started decades ago and where we've come to this day and how we've embraced in the county. But we see our shortfalls in that it does make better sense to have a county have the transit to expand further. It's our residents that we, not, we've been wanting to do it. But I think that pulling our resources together would be a great thing. I appreciate the vision the commissioners have to see our transit become truly all embracing of our county that deserves it. I don't see really any struggles we can't get over. As I thought through a lot, Carrie and Chaz have been on the team that's meeting with everybody else. They're committed to the employees. I think it's just reassuring. And all of us think about our employees. We as thinking of our employees in the city, obviously you as commissioners, your employees mean a lot to you. So I appreciate that commitment. I think we can, we can do this rather easily. I look forward to it. Thank you for addressing this and wanting to do this. I think it makes sense and we're very supportive of them. Carrie is just wonderful to have her past experience and knowledge. And Chaz, they mean a lot to me, actually, us. And we're proud of where we've gone with transit, but I think transit can go further.
Well, I want to touch on that because I I've had a number of conversations regarding transit, obviously publicly and privately. I mean, every once in a while, I might just be in a grocery store and someone might stop me and tell me, you know, how ridiculous this idea is or something, you know? Everybody has an opinion and that's fine. So on day one of the hypothetical possible transfer, I think transit is better funded on day one because of some accounting issues. And I think on day two, service doesn't change. And so what I'm saying though is, you know, I think from the commissioner's standpoint, that those out years, that future involves a potentially substantial increase in the county's population. Personally, I think more so than any of the current projections from any of the entities that are giving us projections would suggest. I think that's very likely. And with that greater population would come greater need. I think another scenario that is of some interest is what I'll refer to as just NUCO. Some major entity that is contemplating locating in our county and would have an interest in influencing the nature type or method of that service being delivered for their purposes, NUCO's purposes. The problem I see with both the population situation and what I'm calling NUCO is we won't know till we know that that is needed. And we won't necessarily have a year or two to be responsive to that, you know? So I think, you know, from the county's standpoint, this is a, this is a horizon vision. It's not about the next day or the day after that, when I think funding improves a little bit, service remains pretty much the same. It's beyond that. And the changes that may occur in the future will be driven by the need of the population or potentially the need of NUCO. So I guess, you know, what I'm conveying there is we are not attacking the existing level of service and system. It's probably not that far from where it needs to be right now. But there are certainly issues that could really drive a need to change that model a little bit. And I think we're just positioning ourselves to be very nimble in that series of potential future scenarios where we can respond better quickly.
I think that's a very wise approach. When we have a route to lead expand, there's a lot of thought that goes into it, a lot of planning, funding issues. And we know this, we have to think a lot about it. So I think that expectation is realistic and I think that's very wise.
Want to give our transit director, Chaslin, an opportunity for any comments you would like to make?
I agree. I think that the future of transit, this is the best to me. The city took over in 2020, so this to the staff has already been transitioned. And I don't really think that there are any moves or any backlash at all. So I think that it'll be a smooth transition if it does happen.
Deputy Director?
I don't have a lot to add, but I will just say I appreciate your comments in recognizing the fact that we've done the best that we can from a county standpoint, being a city department, being a city service. We were very limited on what we can do to help throughout the county. And we were trying to be good partners to the county and to those outlined areas outside of the city of Lancaster. But again, obviously being a city department, we were very limited on what we could offer throughout the county. So again, I think logical next steps, although we love public transit, we think we've come a long way. Logically, it makes sense to be under the county auspices because you do have the potential to do so much more than we could for the entire county, not just the city.
Also like that, that city, Mayor and I have talked to city council. We're very committed to instill our financial contribution from there. Do you get an estimate for our location, which you're more than happy even there as long as you would like to, right? I think that could be our, but whatever if that happens. And we, funding is a big deal, as you well know, and trying to position ourselves to. Whereas the city, we're very committed to at least have the same amount of funding resource with our financial. We're not planning to go out.
So we're, we're in the unsweet spot. I mean, I've done a lot of like reading on this stuff. And, you know, if you're in a metro area, you have public transit. It's in full use. It's very necessary. There's tremendous population that wants access to that service. And then as you, you get further out from the metro areas and you get into the more suburban areas, you have kind of a similar infrastructure requirement to provide that service. But you're accessing a smaller population. And so the metrics and economics of suburban transit is quite different than metro transit. And from what I can tell, it's been a very difficult process for suburban transit to kind of figure out what's the best model and how can we do this most efficiently to get to those people in need? While the infrastructure kind of seems a little strong for going and picking up this lady in Baltimore that wants to go to the grocery store or something like that, you know? And so I'm aware of the historic nature of the challenge and the chance that it hasn't been figured out yet. But I have just enough arrogance to think that this team of people who are, you know, most interested in this issue, I think we can figure it out. And so I, the county is currently thinking that we accept that challenge of figuring it out. And I think it, you know, there's a chance that we do something over the longer horizon that is incredibly special and looked on by other entities and organizations as a model for, maybe you could do it that way, like they're doing it, you know? Kind of like the workforce center is. It's just, you know, one of the reasons why we want to kind of create a nexus there between the two opportunities, both designed to alleviate impediments that people have and trying to live their life and get to work and get some food, get some medical care and all the things that people need on a day on day basis that most of us here in this room get to take for granted. So. Mr. Levy, comments?
No, other than the fact, I'm 100% supporter of this moving forward. I, since I've been a commissioner, I thought it was really strange. And when I first came, it was said Lancaster Transit. And I said, you know, why, why don't we have a county? Then later on, you agreed to put Fairfield on there, which we appreciate. But yeah, it really, it really makes sense, quite frankly. And I appreciate, appreciate Commissioner Davis, all his work, as well as you folks, the work you put into this. So it'll be successful. We'll make it so.
Thank you, sir. And I know, I'm going to thank Chaslin and Paul and Carrie and Ani and there are probably others I'm not thinking of right now. I'm understanding that a fair amount of preparation is going in to some thought right now in advance of the September 30 meeting. I'll be briefed on all those conversations as they mature and get finalized in advance of that so that, you know, hopefully I won't make a mistake in discussions with the employees. But, you know, something I won't make a mistake on for sure is that we need them. We appreciate them. And we don't want to have them experience harm as a result of the transfer. So, you know, I'll certainly convey that. And then, you know, hopefully if it gets granular, Ani will be with me to, you know, say it right.
Be good. Be good. Yeah, yesterday was the deadline for submitting the grant for next fiscal year. So thank you, Chaslin. I understand that you are working with a very archaic and not user friendly system to do that grant application. So thank you for all of your weekend work and effort that you put into making sure that was successful. Okay, yay. And as part of that, she did also submit for a grant to move transit onto the Mark's radio system with that. And there would be a local match component for that. But we gave that assurance that that would be something that we would be supportive of if the grant was received.
I greatly appreciate that. There's a real need. We lost our repeater, unfortunately, that's up in stock. We've been about four hours without radio, so the site we need to add. Thank you, Blackman. I am so pleased about Mark's and how it's met with all our safety forces in the county. What a good new, good kind of software in Mark's. We are in the best place overseas. Bringing transit on that will be a huge help.
Well, an appreciation to all of you. And as Steve said, we will continue to have conversations and dialogues, you know, including HR in that process. Because this is, you know, a heavily human resource component that we're talking about here. And we want to make sure that we get that right. So thank you all.
Yeah, Steve, Rick, anything that you're thinking about that hasn't come up in this conversation or a different vantage point that you're interested in?
Well, I think, you know, transportation is one of the biggest impediments for getting people, you know, back into the workforce. And this is going to be another tool in our toolbox from a county standpoint to be able to help that. You know, we have the workforce center from the training standpoint, obviously working on housing. This will be another, you know, it's not going to be the simplest thing to be able to connect everybody. But I think as, as you mentioned, having all these heads in the room will figure it out. And I'm really excited to work with you guys.
Sorry, I'm asleep.
You look better. Rick was late. That's on him. I was also curious to hear from Dr. Brown. I, you know, some of what we're talking about here, the auditor's office is going to certainly play a critical role. The Auditor's Office is going to uh certainly play a, a critical role in getting some of the numbers right and the allocations right as we try to effectuate a harmless transfer of, give me the number, Chazlin, how many employees? Forty-two, people who all have their own little unique circumstance, not little, but their unique circumstance, you know, that they're looking at, you know? There's this accumulation of vacation that they had. Now do they lose it when they transfer? Or, you know, the, the health insurance timeline is a little uh bit of a challenge, as I understand it. But anyway, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to comment on this discussion.
Well, people first and we'll stand ready to help. And there will be a time with other complexities relating to asset transfer. That's probably going to be a complex thing, but people first and we stand ready to be helpful for that. Asset transfer will be the vehicles, cash, fund balances. Those sorts of things will come later and that will be another set of complexities, but one that can certainly be done because we've done it before with other transitions.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Folks, I didn't mean to take up so much of your time, but I, I did so because I don't want to denigrate the significance of the moment. Uh, I think it's a, it's a big deal.
It is a big deal. Thank you, Commissioners and all, especially. For rich, this is a thing.
Yeah.
This is a right for our county or city.
Commissioner Levacy has already indicated his one hundred percent support. And it was my idea, so I think the resolution's gonna go just fine today.
Probably so.
But you're welcome to stay, you're welcome to go. I'm just, you know, giving you a forecast. I think the weather is clear. Right, so much. Thank you all. Rick, prayer, just prayer to your arrival. You were, um, e- each of us had some favorable comments on the Chancellor's letter regarding the transfer of state funds to the Workforce Center, four and a half million, and uh didn't want the moment to pass without you having also an opportunity to comment on that.
Thank you, and thank you to Ani on our own.
Keep your voice nice and high.
And yeah, I really don't have that prop. Uh, but so, and Ani, thanks for uh ushering that through uh with the Chancellor. Uh, it's just a great opportunity. We're gonna have a, a meeting with OU and Hocking to kind of, well, where some of this stuff is set in stone that we're moving forward on, kind of using this as a chance to make sure that, you know, now that we do have it, what we thought, what, ten months ago, is still, you know, what we're feeling now for how we're gonna use all of those funds from a programmatic standpoint. For example, we have money in there for welding. Well, Fairfield Career Center is looking at funds to start a welding program actually at their Fairfield campus. So it wouldn't make sense for us to have welding then at the Workforce Center. So those are some things we're just kind of, we're gonna work through and, and determine what we want to look at long term.
So appreciate your work on that. Or did that, are, are we still under highlights or resolutions?
We're moving to that right now.
All right, let's do it.
So the review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals. And for the voting meeting today, there are seventeen resolutions. And one of those, we talked about being a resolution to authorize the filing of applications through ODOT for federal transit administration and execution of a contract with ODOT upon grant application approval for LFPT. Uh, that is there. And we also have a resolution approving the twenty twenty-four holiday schedule. And then lastly, a resolution that I'll highlight authorizing an MOU to support the pilot benefit bridge program through the end of twenty twenty-five. Um, Cory, do you want to add anything on that one?
Um, the benefit bridge program, uh, we received one point two million dollars of that uh this year. Looking forward to continuing and expanding that uh program. We discussed a little bit when we did our uh listen and learn. But uh we're roughly going to double the number of participants in that program this year. So uh we're anxious to do that.
Wonderful. You all did highlight that during your uh recent listen and learn. I appreciate that. Budget reviewer?
Lot of dates this week.
Hey, Rochelle Callen?
Before we get to calendar review, I'm gonna extend a courtesy to a couple of our voters and taxpayers who arrived late and missed, uh, voters and taxpayers. So I'm gonna return to public comment. Uh, this is a courtesy. And so in exchange for my courtesy, I'll ask that our three-minute guideline be applied with. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission at this time?
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
Uh, my name's Ray Steeman, twenty-four forty-four West Point Road, Lancaster, Ohio. And uh we were late getting here because it took us twice as long to get there this morning to convene. They had uh drought thirty-seven blocked off. They were painting lines on it and we couldn't travel about fifteen minutes. So uh with that thought, I would like to say a couple of things too this morning that came across our thoughts this week. Uh, I've received a letter from Tom Dewey, whom uh we have known personally for a number of years. And uh we would still like to see him come into this county. And he has a lot of information that he has been talking about since uh first President Bush in nineteen ninety-one, I think it was. He approved things such as the agenda twenty-one for this country. And Tom Dewey knew exactly what this was going to do. And he's been talking about it since. It's a plan that's put together by, I would say, powers that run the UN. And it's affecting us very greatly right now. But Tom Dewey was born and raised right up in Newark area. And his sister, I think, lives in Lancaster. Uh, he's been fighting for the global people for the last twenty-some years. And uh they want to do away with our constitution. And they want to make the United States a third world country. And they're trying to do it by many, many ways and in many areas. They're trying very hard to make it that way. And they're trying to make us a green uh and solar farms and wind nails and taking land that is for farming and turn it into non-productive as far as I'm concerned. And Tom Dewey says the same thing. The boondoggle idea that they come up with, they don't make sense and they don't bring us more energy or help the people.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
Good morning. I'll tell you. Um, we all know what took place on September eleventh of two thousand and one, now known as nine eleven. And after nine eleven, remember how many more citizens started to attend church and get their eyes focused on God Almighty? But looking to God and His word fainted in several months. Just consider public meetings like this one where the leadership doesn't see a need to pray about the decisions that are to be made by them. After nine eleven, what has been done to control illegal immigration in our country, our state and our county? What is being done by our county, state and federal government to put a stop to the horrible influx of illegal immigrants, illegal aliens? We have a Border Patrol, but they don't get much assistance in doing their job. And thus we have a hundred thousand illegals crossing each day. Thus, one has to ask just how many illegals are right here in Fairfield County? What is being done to improve our county from the influx of illegals? And how much of our taxpayers' income goes to benefit illegals? Look at the crime wave and increase in illness since Democrats and RINOs on all levels of government have been very lax and seen to it that the immigration law is enforced. It's obvious that spending control is not a priority in government. Just spend more and tax the people more and make more money through COVID, of course, and see how it has been given out to many different departments. When groups are not budgeting in a sensible way, they just prove to we, the people, that their biggest concern is not for the US citizen. Economic security and financial security is going haywire. Only twenty of the seventy Republicans in the House are willing to stop the increase in the federal budget. Citizens feel that the action isn't much different on this county level either. Thus, it's very sad and concerning to see just how fast and rapidly our country is going downhill since nine eleven. In closing, I just want to share, our own son, who is sixty, just recently had to have emergency surgery for an aneurysm. Needless to say, these two parents felt very helpless since he was in California and these parents here in Ohio. We certainly praise the Lord for prayer. Soon after the six-hour surgery, the surgeon informed Rick that he had had only one percent chance of surviving. I might add too, that against the advice of his parents, Rick did have two of the COVID shots. Thank you, and thank you for the backup.
Anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? You're done. Rochelle on calendar, please.
There's a TID meeting today at eleven AM at the Fairfield County Record Center. Clerk reports Brandon Meyer organized a meeting with State Treasurer Robert Sprague for tomorrow, September thirteenth at ten AM in this room. The anchored in glass exhibit ribbon cutting will be September fourteenth at four thirty PM at the Ohio Glass Museum located at one twenty-four West Main Street in Lancaster. Director Dan Schroeder from the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services will visit Fairfield County Job and Family Services on September twenty-first at ten forty-five AM. And the Visitation Center will host an open house on October third at two PM at their new location at four oh seven East Main Street in Lancaster.
I just want to pause on that for a moment. And I know John isn't here because he's doing an exercise with EMA. We have the M by there, but him and the facilities team have done a wonderful job in renovating Portland Parks uh and uh EMA office there to house Visitation Center. Uh, Judge Smith and Mandy Christ, who is the director of that program, are both very happy. Um, and they're very excited to show that off to all of you as well as the community. But really hats off to the facilities crew for managing all of that in-house.
And I have a couple of questions. One, what is the, is there a functional start date or did that already happen?
Um, they are pretty much moved in, um, but I think they're still doing uh visits next door here, but the staff have moved their office space.
And uh, of course, we'll continue to give a shout out to uh Fairfield County Parks for their cooperation in returning that uh, the use of that building uh to the county. Um, it seems fair and square. I mean, I want to go overboard here. We gave to them, they're giving it back the use of it in any event, so that, that just seems fair.
And we're making nice improvements to their building.
At it, girl. And then um Cory, I wonder, ask you, what, what prompts the director to visit? Is that just, see, like, going out?
To do the tour of the state. And so he's, uh, when he started as director, he uh said that he wanted to visit all eighty-eight counties. And he is in the process of doing that. It's my understanding that he's visited about half of the counties. And I guess we were up next on the, on the list.
And this is not his first visit down here. He has come before, so appreciate him.
Yeah. Is there anything you need or you feel like you're all good on that?
Um, I, I think it's a pretty casual visit, uh, but certainly all of you are welcome to join us. We would be happy to have you. Uh, he, they had uh said that he usually will stay for between sixty and ninety minutes. They gave us an hour window uh for his arrival. And I just, I just found out that he's actually coming by himself. So um I anticipated that he would probably bring a few people with him, but I guess he's just coming by himself. Looking forward to that visit. Hopefully some of you, if not all of you, can join us.
Well, appreciate that. Thank you, Cory. And then uh correspondence, please.
The Commissioner's Office received correspondence from Ohio's First Lady, Fran Dwyane, on August twenty-eighth regarding Dolly Perdon's imaginary, imagination library and a letter from the Liberty Township Trustee dated August twenty-ninth regarding Liberty Township Resolution eighteen twenty-three. The Lancaster Eagle Gazette published an article by Jeff Barron on September first titled Fairfield County Officials Will Accept or Reject Land Use Plan This Month. On September fourth, WSYX's Darryl Roland reported, Big Crowd Expected Tuesday For Final Hearing On Fairfield County Land Use Plan. The Office of the County Auditor had a September fifth press release titled County Auditor's Office Celebrates Payroll Appreciation Week. Richard Solomon of WBNS reported a story on September sixth titled Fairfield County Residents Oppose Plan That Could Prepare Them For Intel's Growth. The Lancaster Eagle Gazette published an article on September sixth by Jeff Barron titled Land Use Plan Not Popular With Those At Public Hearing Tuesday. WSYX's Darryl Roland reported another story on September sixth titled Two Hundred Plus Pack Steamy Hearing On Future Land Use In Fairfield County. Commissioner Jeff Ficks wrote an article to the Lancaster Eagle Gazette on September sixth titled Land Use Plan Needed As Growth Continues. The Lancaster Eagle Gazette published another article by Jeff Barron on September seventh titled Fairfield County Commissioners Hear Of Housing Issues During Weekly Meeting. There was a press release on September seventh from the Office of the County Auditor titled Growth A Village of Baltimore And Liberty Township Featured In September Map Of The Month. County Auditor Dr. Brown provided a memo on September seventh with the following subjects, Property Tax Review and Reform Committee, Making Numbers Count Seminar, Ohio's Homestead Program, and the Number Of Parcels In The County. Auditor Brown also provided her wins of the week. The Lancaster Eagle Gazette published an article September eighth by Connie Smith, which highlights some of the great activities transpiring at the OSU Extension Office located at the Fairfield County Agricultural Center. The Commissioner's Office received correspondence from Eastern Cotton Tail on September eighth regarding Eastern Cotton Tail Solar Community Frequently Asked Questions. A September eighth newsletter from the Lancaster Fairfield County Chamber of Commerce highlighting Fairfield County soil and water celebrating their eightieth anniversary with a ribbon cutting to kick off their annual meeting. A press release from the Board of Fairfield County Commissioners dated September eleventh titled Commissioners Announce Expansion Of Fairfield County Twenty Twenty-Three Comprehensive Plan Development Process. Letters From County Residents Regarding Solar Projects And The Visit Fairfield County Ohio Newsletter. That is it.
All right. Thank you, Rochelle. Under old business, I have none. Commissioner Levacy?
So uh last Friday, I, excuse me, I had the opportunity to uh do a roundtable with Congressman Balderson uh at the South Central Facility. And the main purpose for that meeting, as well as other things, was to talk about broadband, which uh South Central has received a major grant to expand that, which quite frankly makes sense. You know, we've all, especially during the COVID period, we saw a major need for, especially in some of the areas that are less served or not served at all with broadband. And this gives uh South Central the opportunity to expand some of those services into some of those uh areas uh to start out with. Fairfield County is not included in that, but it's about a ninety-million-dollar project. But their expectation, the way they talk, was eventually they would like to expand it throughout their area of services, especially in the rural areas. So I, I think, I think it was a very good meeting. I, about eight or ten years ago, I had a meeting with Congressman Stivers at the time down at Hocking College, and that very subject was part of the discussion. And how to get there was almost impossible because of economic needs. You know, um, that would good uh process will.
New business, I'm, I'm not, I don't have anything right now. Commissioner Lavesey under new business.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to give our electeds an opportunity to share any information that they might have or be appropriate for us. Right now, we have Treasurer Bonson with us. Good morning, sir.
Good morning to you. Received an email late last evening from the Ohio Department of Development concerning House Bill 33, which has budgeted $350 million for brownfield remediation to be split equally between 2024 and '25. Also $150 million for fiscal year '24 for demolition. The main reason for the email is the designation of a lead entity, and they have mentioned based upon our population is the fact that we have a land bank. The Fairfield County Land Bank will be the lead entity. They're having a webinar on October 4th to explain further the process, but we will go ahead, fill out the paperwork, and submit that to people for this, to be the main contact for the use of these funds as we move forward. So more information to come. I know audiences received some information from CCAO. This information usually kind of rolls out slowly. It comes out, then they pull something back, and then they work forward. But we'll get through the whole process. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that update. As a member of the board for the land bank, I look forward to learning more about that and seeing how that might be used to be helpful here in the county. We have with us also County Engineer Jeremiah Up. Good morning, sir.
Morning, Commissioner. We continue to roll through our, the end of our paving and construction season. And also, I received an email this morning that was an outline of ODOT's track applications. And within that, I think Bennett's going to try to get it up there on the screen for us. They had a graph that showed the construction cost change. And this thing goes all the way back to 2007. You can see, those, you can't see, when you get to the end there, there you go, where the 110.3 is. And look at what that's done since the end of 2020. So I know I'm preaching to the choir because we've all experienced it, but that, that's massive, and that, that's something that's very difficult to overcome without, you know, stepping backwards and not doing as much as you were doing. We haven't experienced that yet, and I'm going to try not to experience. It's going to be challenging.
If you could, I'm just talking about that leg there from 110 to 140. Is there a, a major driver that you could pinpoint on that? Or is it just a collection of, is that material? Is that labor? Is that margin? I mean, do you know what's going on there?
It's material and labor.
Okay.
Material was a significant part of that.
So, Mr. Lavesey.
So I had an opportunity to drive on Coon Path today, and I noticed there's a portion before you get to 158 that's not paved. So I assume that's going to be part of the roundabout complex. Is that correct?
Yep. There's no sense in us paving it, and then ripping it out next.
Exactly. Thank you. Very nice, by the way.
Thanks.
I'm going to give Rick Zembrack an opportunity to comment.
Thank you. I mean, this is why it's important to do things like we're doing in Violet Township, where we're working with developers to help them fund the cost for roads, making sure that we plan and get in front of development, because if we're not, we're going to find other ways to find funds to take care of our, our streets and roads. So I appreciate, like, Violet Township letting us come to the table and help with, you know, developing and making sure that we get funds from developers to help get these roads built and come up with other incentives to do that, so it doesn't all fall on Jeremiah's crew.
That's word, Jeremiah.
Public-private partnerships. We are, we are, we've done them before, but we're moving into them on a scale that we haven't done before, and I'm looking forward to that. That is modeled after a lot of the projects that ODOT's doing. I know we're on a smaller scale, but when we start talking about workaround interchanges and commercial areas and things like that, we get into some big dollars. And I'm just trying to follow the format that ODOT's been using to get some of this stuff done through the TIDs.
Appreciate your work, and I've been around long enough to see our engineers operated differently. And you're operating it now. I prefer the way you do it.
Thank you.
We also have our Recorder Lisa McKenzie with us. How are you today?
Very well, thank you. Had a great meeting with our vendor from Gidler yesterday with some updates, and they have asked us to potentially host a district meeting here. So we're looking forward to making plans for that. And then last week in particular, I had two customers seek me out personally to let me know that Bill Squires in my office and Shelley Martin has been exceptional in going above and beyond for customer service. And so it's just really great when they take the time to seek you out personally to let you know that your staff members are, are doing an exemplary job. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. That's very encouraging. Excited about the district meeting. I'm going to come back to that in a minute. But Dr. Brown, how are you today?
Honey, thank you. Next week, we will have our Summit for Real Estate, serving those who have served. I want to say thank you to Treasurer Bonson, to Recorder McKenzie, and also Commissioner Lavesey for participating in that particular summit. And looking forward to that. We're seeing a lot of positive feedback from bankers, realtors, title searchers who are interested in attending. We do have approval from the state for continuing education for that. You mentioned the public-private partnerships. Even if it's through the Transportation Improvement District, we will likely have to bring that onto our books if the funding for that from a county perspective or from an agency perspective is a funding stream of the county. Just want to keep that in mind as we think about accounting of those particular partnerships early on. There are different gas bill pronouncements that require some pretty sophisticated tracking of those things. The Senate is having a Property Tax Reform Review Committee and participating in that. And one of the things that I have great interest in is the increase of the owner occupancy credit. It hasn't been adjusted over time, just as the housing market itself has increased over time. And there might be a way to make that a static amount rather than a percentage, so that would be helpful to those who are in the middle income, low and middle income. And that is something that's had some favor right now. But if there are other ideas that anybody has relating to property tax reform, certainly we'd like to hear about those, because now is the time to get some of those recommendations forward. With the homestead program, the veterans, surviving spouses now have the ability to continue that forward. There are ways that we can improve that a little bit more, too. So that's something that's on the schedule. Thinking about finance reporting, depreciation schedules haven't been updated since 2005. So I think we're going to be updating those by the end of the year. For example, vehicles, you know, Jeremiah gets a lot more use out of those than what's on the depreciation schedule, sometimes twice as long as the formal schedule shows. So what I'm looking into is maybe having a range on the schedule that gives us some flexibility in how we account for those. That would require a resolution. I'm thinking by the end of the year that we just update those schedules from 2005. The other thing I'm thinking about is cybersecurity. Thank you to Dan and his team for pushing out the training. Just this past week, someone was pretending to be Jeremiah and someone pretending to be Kyle and one of their payroll checks deposited in a different account. And we were able to understand that that wasn't Jeremiah and that wasn't Kyle, but we certainly let them know that that has happened and that we're paying attention to those sorts of contacts. Thank you to our GIS department, particularly Kurt Truax, who's been working with the Board of Elections to update the board boundaries. It's a very intense process and one that he's been very helpful with. We mentioned the number of parcels, and just as a point of data, there have been 2,111 new parcels in the county since 2017, and that's largely a result of splits and development. That's a large kind of activity, one of the largest in the state in terms of the increases in the number of parcels. So it is something to have attention to, pay more attention to, because there is only going to be more of those types of activities. Marki Callen now for November 8th. That will be the Financial Leadership Summit, in which we will have some hearing and other information provided to financial officers.
Lisa mentioned the district meeting that she's excited about. I also got a note recently that the young Republicans of Ohio are hosting their awards ceremony here in Fairfield County this year. It was interesting. I was in Boston this weekend with my brother. And a few minutes out of our weekend, we looked over some things from our biological father. I didn't know him well, but there was just lots of papers and history about our biological father, and we were going over that together. And I found something in there that I, of course, didn't know. A lot I don't know about my father, but I think it was like '59 or '60. He was, there was an article in the Lancaster Gazette about him being, becoming president of the Fairfield County Young Republican Club. And I never knew that about him, and I later was president of that same club when I was younger. But it was just interesting that I continue at almost 60 years old to find things out about my father that I didn't know. But in any event, we appreciate you all being with us today. Thank you. Is there any other issue or item that anybody'd like to bring the attention of the commission at this time? Hearing done. We'll move on to our voting pattern. Please rise if you are able. Join us in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, omnipotent, infinite, and eternal.
Thank you. Rochelle, do we have any announcement?
You're not.
Move on to the approval minutes for September 5, 2023.
Go move.
Second discussion. Please go to roll.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 2-0. From the Commissioner's Office, Resolution 2023-9.12.A, A Resolution to Authorize the Filing of Applications With the Ohio Department of Transportation for Grants Through the United States Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration as Authorized Under the Federal Transit Laws as Codified 49 U.S.C. Section 5311, Financial Assistance for Other Than Urbanized Areas and Funds Available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, 5339, 5339B, OTP 2, RTP, STP, END, and any other grants that become available through ODOT and executing a contract with ODOT upon each grant application approval.
Second discussion. Well, again, Chaslon, thank you for being with us today and for your continuing work as we navigate this process. I know that Commissioner Fix couldn't be with us today, but I am confident that if he were, he would share in Commissioner Lavesey and I's support for continuing along this path. Further discussion? Please go to roll.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 2-0. From Fairfield County Court of Common, please. Resolution 2023-9.12.C, A Resolution to Appropriate from Unappropriated Into a Major Expense Category for Fund Number 2839 Recovery Court Grant to Establish a Budget for 2023 Subfund 8333.
Second discussion. Let's go to roll.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 2-0. From Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2023-9.12.D, A Resolution to Authorize the Disposal of Obsolete Vehicles Within the Fairfield County Engineer's Office by Public Auction.
Under Fairfield County Engineer, I move Resolution, so B, E, F, and G.
Second discussion. Any questions? It's not you painting the stripes out on 37 today, is it? State road, right? Just making sure. Further discussion? Please go to roll.
Commissioner Lavesey? Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 2-0. From Fairfield County Family and Children First Council, Resolution 2023-9.12.H, A Resolution Approving a Subgrant Agreement Between the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners and its Administrative Agent for the Fairfield County Family and Children First Council and Ohio Department of Job and Family Services for State Fiscal Year 2024.
Under Fairfield County Family and Children First Council, I move Resolution, Resolutions H and H9.
Second discussion. Please go to roll.
Commissioner Lavesey? Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 2-0. From Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2023-9.12.J, A Resolution Authorizing the Approval of a Memorandum of Understanding by and between Fairfield County Department of Job and Family Services and the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services.
Under Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move Resolution J, K, Ellen, and.
Second discussion. Please go to roll.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 2-0. From the Fairfield County Prosecutor, Resolution 2023-9.12.N, A Resolution Approving a Fund-to-Fund Transfer From the Prosecutor's Local Match Allocation to Fund 2784, Subfund 8298 For Grant Year 2023-2024.
Go move.
Second discussion. Please go to roll.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 2-0. From Fairfield County Utilities, Resolution 2023-9.12.O, A Resolution to Assess 2023 Water and Sewer Delinquencies.
For Fairfield County Utilities, I move Resolution.
Second discussion.
We have Tony online, and Josh Andrews joining us here in person.
Here to answer any questions you might have.
It's pretty standard fare, right? Further discussion? I would like to say hi to Tony.
Tony, are you able to hear us?
Yeah. No, I got it. Can you hear me?
Yes. How are you today, sir?
Doing well.
Are you really doing well, or are you just saying I'm doing well?
No, I'm doing well. Bored, but I'm doing well.
Understand you're, got some things going on there, but anything you'd like to add?
No. One of the resolutions is toward the delinquents, which are mostly the sewer-only customers that you really can't shut off to get them to pay their bill. And then the other one is the Grant Hampton Waterline Project. The individuals that extend the service to their house, we're assessing that to their taxes.
All right. Well, Tony, thank you for being with us today, and we look forward to having you back in person as soon as that's okay.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Please go to roll.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 2-0. On Payment of Bills, Resolution 2023-9.12.Q, The Resolution Authorizes the Approval of Payment of Invoices For Departments That Need Board of Commissioners Approval.
Second discussion. Please go to roll.
Commissioner Lavesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 2-0. The next regular meeting is scheduled for September 19th at 9:00 a.m.
Chaslon, would you have a minute after the meeting? Just to visit? Is there any other issue or item that anybody'd like to bring the attention of the commission at this time? Dr. Brown?
Seeing the special assessments and the word "delinquency" made me think about the delinquent tax list, which will be published in the newspaper on September 28th. So it's been scrubbed, and there's still time, if that's something an individual wants to take care of ahead of time.
Did you take me off the list? Did you take me off of this? Further discussion?
Motion, we adjourn.
I got a motion to adjourn in a second, although everybody was thinking about saying aye, aye, both same sign. Motion carries. The commission is adjourned. We thank you all for coming and hope you have a good rest of your day.